Here, Sidney.
Here.
John.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
Alleged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then the motion for this kind of agenda.
I have a change, actually. I would like to move item six A to nine C.
Six A to nine C.
Please and thank you, and I'll make a motion to approve it with that change.
Okay.
I second.
All there.
Aye.
Aye.
Public input. This is a time and place for discussion on an honorary on agenda with a time limit of three each. Discussion possible action in reference to business thirty repair project.
Eric, convene a meeting, update.
Good day, how you doing?
Eric, convene a meeting. Obviously, you need an update here, so we took the highway very delighted to do project.
The first was the cowork, likely be starting construction of that tomorrow. The second is the major point repairs. We put it out for quotations, quotations came back because she's going to throw it out correctly. So what we're going to do now is go out and put it to bid. So we'll post a bid August fifth. We'll have a public hearing on the ninth, and you guys will accept hopefully the lowest bid at a time. The only other thing to note is the twenty-eight E agreement was signed. How many is going to do their section and your section up to the point you guys completely own the room? So they'll do that as part of their change order. So any questions or concern on Highway thirty?
Remind me, we said the public hearing at the last meeting? Well, we did not.
Uh, no, we'll set it on the twenty eighth.
Well, not for August ninth, do you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll set it on the twenty-first.
Set it for the.
Set it for the.
Or, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I thought it had to be published for thirty days for a public hearing.
No, it's, uh.
Sorry, the twenty-sixth.
Ten to fourteen days.
Okay.
Any questions for?
Alright, thank you, Mary. Thanks.
Couldn't zoom in, that would've been easier.
That's fine, I was in the area.
You don't have to stay if you don't want to.
Oh, I'll answer an engineering question.
Oh.
Alright, discussion possible action in reference twenty twenty-one sour crowd days. Gary, I think that's you.
Uh, it is me. How's everybody doing?
Good, Craig.
Night. I brought a copy. I sent it to Brandon super late today. Uh, is okay if I add these out?
Yeah, go ahead.
Alright. Got a couple copies. I'm just going to talk over you this stuff, okay? Save everybody all the time. So in summary, it's the same form letter we've sent the last decade. There's a couple of changes. So if you guys want, I can just review the changes with you. We can go through it all, whichever way you want to do it.
Changes.
Oh, problem. Thank you. So first change, no carnival. Uh, we will not have a carnival this year, unfortunately, due to scheduling. Uh, that was going to have to be the third weekend with school starting Monday immediately after. The doctors committee has decided that that was not the best schedule for this year, so we are asking for the first weekend in August. Uh, no carnival. Pros and cons with that, but as far as a city coordination request, there really aren't any a lot of changes because of that. Really, we're not asking for the park for a backup camping spot. Would be really the only big change there. Uh, road closures would be the same. Timing will be a little different. West, excuse me, East Main and Washington, because we're not setting up, we don't need until seven AM Friday morning. So all day Thursday, those would stay open. Where normally those are kind of the first to close. And then we close Washington right after business traffic gets through Thursday night. That would all stay open till, till Friday morning. Uh, as far as return to streets, it would still be noon on, noon on Sunday. Again, also that's going to be that West Main block. The rest will be gone before I go to bed. So quick, Stephanie, look, did you get a question on the carnival?
No.
Okay.
Sir, pressing.
It is, it is unfortunate. Uh, one of the things that goes behind it, two of the carnivals in the tri-state area are no longer business. So now you're down to three, and we keep, we're not a big draw.
Yeah.
Uh, we lost the second weekend, the sweet corn festival. I get it, it's a business decision. Third weekend, we lost out to another large fair. Uh, I understand his business decisions. We as a committee have to make ours if we want to be jumping all around or if we want to try and stick. So we're going to try this year and see how it goes. Our hope is next year, everything lines up and we're right back to the way we were. So downtown road closures again. It's all the same roads, it's just the timing. We're leaving Washington and East Main open a full day longer. Uh, parade route, no closures, five, or no changes, five K, no changes, car show, no changes. Ice cream social at the park, otherwise no changes. Do have a firework permanent request in there, launching again. We'll coordinate fences with Mr. Bagby. Uh, I know the school ends August first. We're right behind that. We'll get to that as we, as we get there on what those will look like. Still leaving up the back baseball fence for kind of our nice safety fence. We really only have the one gap to, to keep an eye on. That's really it for changes. Uh, temporary liquor license. Police services will be worked out with Chief Shannon. Uh, obviously, we'll pay though, as we have in the past, we'll pay for our extra services and those kind of things, so.
I have two questions.
Of course.
Is there going to be a softball tournament?
Yeah.
And when is the softball tournament?
Thursday, Saturday, all Thursday.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Okay, and so I see that the parade is staging at the park. When you say the city park, do you mean down there or do you mean Diamonds Four?
Uh, parade staging will be on, uh, East Fifth Avenue, north of town.
Oh, is it the five K that's staging?
Five K's at the park, yes, that's, that's coordinated.
So that won't interfere?
No, that's coordinated.
And then what are we going to do about alcohol at the park?
That's not our hall. That's a city ordinance for no alcohol in the park, correct?
Well, it is a city ordinance for no alcohol in the park, however, in the past several years, it's, or every time I've ever been on the council, it's just always been kind of a thing and it's been overlooked and we've just allowed people to do it. But we need to let our police department know what we're going to be doing in regards to that, if we're making an exception for that.
That's your guys' call.
I mean, it's always been past.
Always been a look away.
Yeah, I mean, if you don't have a problem, then we kind of just look away from it. If we don't have a problem with it, it's definitely a problem with it.
Yeah, it's always been if it's in a cozy, if the police have reason to check and see what's in that cozy because they're intoxicated, that's a different situation.
But you know that comes back on the city if they leave an accident. If, if something happens and somebody leaves that park and they are not, and they get into an accident, it can come back on the city because it's a city park, and then we have a lawsuit on our end.
But it's also saying if anybody runs a pavilion and had it or two.
Yes, but we're not serving it, and that would be part of our defense, I would think. Uh, we're insured though to, for liabilities.
Not, not liquor. Unfortunately, liquor is a much different animal, but.
Well, yeah, if, if we're serving.
Well, you have to have a liquor.
Yeah.
Damp shop.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we're all on the same page because we need to let the police know what their responsibility is for that. And we need to make sure the city's protected and, you know, there's, there's stuff that goes along with that. And I thought at one time there was discussion about a business taking their license out. We, and I'm going to talk now on the council, I'm going to talk as a citizen or a business owner. I did contact the, the sour crowd committee and ask them if we had their blessing to go out there. Because we're kind of off the beaten path unlike all the other businesses around here. And we just would like to be, have a little piece in the pie like all the other businesses down here. And I never rather respond to that, so. Well, I probably, because I guess it's not your job to do that response.
Well, from the sour crowd committee perspective, it's, it's not about opening a license at City Park. To us, it's an ordinance there. We also then look at, you have businesses adjacent to the park that have sales. We also have businesses adjacent to downtown that have sales. So when we do our alcohol questions for our service, which is in our confined beer garden at this end with no adjacent service. As far as, as far as the conversation with the city regarding service at the park, we did have some sidebar conversations. And then it was not, it's not a sour crowd day whether we want a permit or not. We're, we're not serving that down there. We don't have the staffing, nor do we have the interest. And if another business wants to do that, that's fine, no different than.
I was told by another council member that it was a no-go.
Sure, the councils, this idea would be.
It's never been to the council. It's never been to the council.
Correct, and from a committee perspective, the only thing we could do is really just not sponsor the event. If, if we were that against it, that's really our only action we could take. We're not interested in taking that action either.
Right. So you're just kind of out of it?
Correct.
Yeah, so that, okay, so that's probably something that needs to be on an agenda for discussion, for council discussion, I would think.
For allowing somebody else to come in or alcohol in the park in general?
Well, all of it.
Well, my personal opinion is if you aren't going to allow somebody else to come in and serve the alcohol, then I think as a city you would say there's no alcohol in the park.
Yeah.
And then address it as needed.
And then expect our police officers to.
So when something does happen, you can say we didn't allow alcohol in the park. We didn't know there was alcohol. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, but if you're going to have somebody come in and do it, Doug, you can speak any time here, but I think.
It's a good thing and a bad thing, you know, because it's nice to have an organization come in there and accept that responsibility. But I think liability, there's still going to be people that leave the park. If they, if they wreck, the city's still going to get named because it's a city park. But I don't know if that matters in the whole scheme of it. Now, there should be dramb shop insurance there to cover. But depending on what happens, I mean, anybody can sue for anything. So if, um, I'm just going to, if Sarah were to sell alcohol in the park, she has to carry the insurance for that, correct?
Correct. I, I, you just move your dramb shop.
They don't need to transfer their insurance shop there.
I think they have to shut their business for that.
Yes, which one always shut down.
They move it, so you approve it just like any other. The only, the only thing we would have in this was one, approving the license, and two, approving it on our property. Now, keep in mind, we've, we've had the firemen do it in the past and different things. Bill staff has come out into the street before. Um, so it's just one of them things where, you know, I, I think law enforcement wise, it's probably, I mean, let's be honest. There's been beer there every year, right?
Lots of it.
So from a law enforcement standpoint, I think it would be nice to have a controlled environment for the alcohol.
Correct.
So there's, there's pluses and minuses to, to doing it, or, you know.
Well, regardless what, we'll discuss those with the next council meeting, but can you put it as an agenda item for the next council meeting to discuss?
I think we talked, we, we have a dramb shop for you guys that don't need to be on there.
I put it in tonight as far as one of the line items.
But it's not, well, honestly, it's not approved.
Correct.
Uh, fireworks permit, which is in your, your items, so there'll be other things as well.
Shoot that I have for tonight.
Yep.
For, for paperwork pending, dramb shop submitted, you got to do that, and then they give you the bill, and you pay them, and you allot the amount.
Are you guys doing any like blowups or anything for younger kids?
You are?
Yes.
Downtown?
Yes.
Okay, that was in place of the carnival.
Kind of like Heritage Days.
Um, there will be some differences as well. We are looking at a number of items still, um, basically from inflatables with a wristband and you just go do your thing. Uh, we also had our last meeting that looked at something to street, uh, bounce houses, dunk tanks, so on and so forth. Petting zoo, tractor rides, uh, so on and so forth, but, but looking at the cost of those, the administration of a wristband isn't really more than the cost. So we may, why mess with it? Uh, for the middle-aged group, they're going to do a junior high dance Thursday night after the ice cream social downtown be over at midnight. Uh, eleven o'clock midnight. Don't quote me, I mean, those I have a little bit of. But then they've got something to do on Thursday night. On Saturday, either Lloyd's Grass Lot. Hopefully not the pavement, but it'll be weather depending. We are looking at the old time games, pedal war, three-legged race, potato sack race, water balloon toss, cabbage relay, no hands, those kind of things. Uh, winning out of each age groups, so say you have a, a junior high, a high school, uh, an under twenty-five, an old man, whatever you want to call it. Uh, winners would get gift cards to local businesses, uh, but no entry fee or very low entry fee, just to offset the gift card costs to keep those, those engaged. Uh, still have bathtub races, still have pedal poles, still have face painters in those groups as well. Uh, trying to find something for each age group to do, but at the same time, not double or triple stack to where the little kids have three things at the same time to take away from any other events. Like pedal pole is really popular. She said that's an example. Pedal pole is really popular, so we want to avoid that pedal pole. We want to avoid the bathtub races time because that's the age group that really has fun throwing water balloons and it's good fun to go to the fire department. So we're balancing the schedule that way. Uh, the animal, the petting zoo animals, that kind of brought up one, you know, you got to have disposal facilities and how much hand washing and, and so there's things we're not used to with that as well. Does that help kind of give you the older?
Yeah, I, I like that you guys are thinking outside the box.
Well, it kind of has to. We, we don't want to be just parade over, come back and treat for pedal pole and the bath, but that's.
And then events downtown, like, like.
Is somebody still?
Adult activities downtown, like you got to have a reason to get downtown. Why is it downtown?
Well, we, we want to be able to stay, yeah, after five, take a full take an hour, right?
Yeah, right, right, right.
Uh, but, but yeah, finding something for each age range that's appropriate.
I think that's great.
To answer your question, yes, Bingo still has a spot. Whether that's going to be in the Legion or not, we have not coordinated with them, but we still have it on the, on the schedule. Um, they had done, they'd done in the Legion the last couple, and then they had the ten out in front. So whichever they pick, we've got a layout map ready to go for them. We've got, with, with the carnival not here, it unlocks a lot of the food vendors, uh, because carnival has so much restricted. You can't have funnel cake, cotton candy, uh, corn dogs, any of the, the fun things. So with that unlocked this year, we've got a number of new food vendors that will be coming. So, saw quite a few Heritage Days last weekend, but new to us.
You got B and B both ready and Saturday?
Yes.
Any other kind of questions for Gary?
I make a motion to approve everything. Do we need to, do we need to?
It'll be next.
Oh.
He was just telling us.
So if, if you need somebody at the next meeting, which would be the twenty-sixth. Okay, I just need to know enough heads up to get somebody here.
We shouldn't just go and just turn shut them on.
Yeah.
Not unless you guys want something you want to say about the alcohol part.
It's not our, it's not our, it's not our part. We, we take the same approach. I've been doing this, I think, eleven years, and the only time I've been called to the park is to bring change for a hundred. So I, I don't, get called for issues, but at the same time, Saturday, I'm not, I'm busy. So I, I don't go down unless asked, but at the same time, I haven't had calls. The, the biggest one we've had was, was an adjacent business carrying over, which we have that problem downtown as well with styrofoam cups. That's a, hey, that's a, you know, uh, as far as ice cream social, we don't. If it's brought around the rides and those things, we say something. If I'm walking around to turn off lights for fireworks, I don't look at the koozies. That's just a protest.
Koozies, is that what you were saying?
Yeah.
I heard it too.
I understood what you were saying.
I, I'm sure it's, I mean, we collect the can bag right the next morning, we go pick up the trash. I mean, you see it?
Yeah.
But whether it was brought in a cooler, whether it was, I, we just don't have issues. We, we have more issues downtown than we do out there.
Yeah, I just, we have a new police department this year, and so I want to be fair to them and make sure that they know what's expected of them because I don't want it to be in the middle of the night of the event and going, well, you were supposed to do it this way or that way, because that's not fair to them.
Say vote, learn what's expected of us.
I think though, since there's road closures, we should go ahead and approve this.
That's what I was referring to.
I'll move to approve their plan.
Second.
Who's second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Come on, Phil.
Thank you.
Resolution twenty-three, twenty-one passing language to use a deduction simply for current.
So you guys have done this very similar in the past with the community development, um, block grant. This is just to allow us to accept FEMA funds, so it would be wise to approve this.
Motion to approve.
Motion for a second.
Second.
All favor, uh, John.
Uh, aye.
Aye.
Aye, Sarah.
Aye.
Good resolution, I'm sorry.
He's still on the.
I got closer to you.
He's still on the koozie.
Volki item day report.
What are you calling?
Uh, you'll see the attached, uh, report on there for the Volki item day. Uh, it wasn't a very, the weather didn't cooperate as well as in the past, but, um, all in all, I think it was successful. Travis, do you have anything to add?
No, I, everything went pretty much smooth for us down there.
I mean, I thought it all looked kind of similar except for it was a little cheaper for us.
Maybe, maybe we were cleaning it down a little.
I think, uh, I think we did notice is with twenty twenty being the way it was, and people were home and not working, so.
They didn't have anything else to do, but they were cleaning.
So we did notice it was a little lighter, but a lot more metal this year than normal, but yeah, it's, I don't know.
Parts were getting smaller too, so that's getting cheaper for us.
Everybody got rid of their big box keys.
I think lots of good feedback that things went very smooth, like very smooth this year, and maybe.
Johnson County was there early. I mean, that was the first time since I've been here they were early, so getting threw me off.
Right.
But yeah, everything set up smooth down there, shop and shop wise.
People I talked to said the line went smooth, it went fast, it was, everybody knew what, exactly what they were doing and.
We have put a post on Facebook asking for feedback.
I did see that.
Um, just because the biggest thing that we hear when people come through is they are still looking for that hazardous waste disposal. So it may be something that we look into next year for maybe a, a weekday event because they just will not come down on the weekend where they don't have the staff to do it.
Mm-hmm.
So that might be something that we look into, make sure, at least try to offer it, see how it goes.
Right.
So.
You mean as a separate thing or?
Yeah, because they will not do a Saturday, and the Volki item day just works the best on a weekend because people need the time to load that stuff and get in here, but perhaps try to offer a weekday hazardous drop off or something.
Like where we'd stay?
Yeah.
We would stay late so those people could drop it off.
After their.
After their off, and then the next day they would show up and we would just load into their cars, into their trailer. So, just something different that we could drop off.
Is that the feedback you're getting on your Facebook post?
Yeah, there was only one other suggestion and that this isn't going to happen because they want us to come pick it up around town.
Oh, I did see that one. Yeah, I did see that one.
Alright, so your new report.
Yeah, so the three items Dave gave me is we're waiting on IWA for the soccer fields. D and R is working on environmental review for the wells, and we're waiting on the, thanks from survey from this one. That's all I have unless there's something else.
What, what percentage are we at on that survey? Uh, I want to say it's about seventy-five, and they sent a list of addresses. Um, we sent those out, so we're waiting those back for those. Um, should they get a couple of them the other day? Uh, we got to get to that hundred percent, so. Just keep pointing away. The deadline is October first for that next grant period, so.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
Public word, Director report.
Uh, kind of piggybacking on that. That survey, um, we had another water main break. Uh, Brandon got to see the, the condition of the vein and stuff that we're dealing with. Completing to the people to fill out those surveys and get them in. They ask, uh, I mean, the sooner we can get this going. Uh, we started on this in two thousand thirteen, so we, we really need to get moving forward with this.
So Brandon, how many surveys did we send out?
Two hundred and, two hundred and fifty, somewhere in there. So you got.
How many did we get back?
I don't know what the latest number was, but.
Well, that's seventy-five percent.
It's right around seventy-five percent, so.
So you got the addresses that we haven't got yet?
A hundred and sixty-ish?
Yeah.
A little more, a hundred and sixty-five.
Yeah, I want to say it's one seventy-four, but that could be, that could be off on that number, but. But, I mean.
So there's still.
We can't do anything until, so the, the, the next grant is October first, so we have August, September, and then to get it by October first. So it's every quarter or however they do it, but.
Yeah, but we need to stay on it while.
Oh, yeah, we are.
I just wish that there was a way to get.
So do you know who hasn't turned them in?
Well, they could because it's anonymous. Because it would be not, you, you need to.
So basically what they do is. If you don't know.
Well, we set out two hundred and seventy five surveys, we've got to get two seventy-five back.
The two thirty-one or the two fifty-one.
But you can't correlate it to a name and an address and go get them.
No, because it's a, it's a hundred percent anonymous. So what they do is if you don't get them, you, they send you another list of more addresses. So they, you have all the addresses in town, and it's a random, you can still reach your quantity you need to.
Correct.
Using completely anonymous information.
We need to find seventy-five people.
So they'll just keep, they'll just keep running through their, they have a program.
Is that what it was down to?
Randomly pulls these numbers and they keep pulling these addresses until we get that number.
Okay, okay, okay.
Well, Travis.
Uh, we will get there by October first, I promise.
Let's shoot for a little earlier. How about next week? Just kidding.
As, uh, Eric was talking about Highway thirty starting tomorrow, we did put it out on this Nixol and social media to give everybody a heads up. Just bear with us. I don't know if he likes construction, but we got to, we got to do it.
And.
So will that close it?
No, it'll be one line. Should have flaggers and everything up there. Eric took off, so that, uh, it shouldn't really slow anybody down that much.
What time does it close?
Tomorrow afternoon they're going to start, so whenever, whenever they start pulling into town. We're working with the height, or the fire department this year on flushing hydrants, and we're going to do that Monday night. So we will Friday send out a Nixol and put it on Facebook, and then remind them again on Monday that we are going to be doing it to just let people know they will have discoloration and that it's okay, it's just we're, we're doing our flushes. So they're going to use it as training and it's going to, it's going to save us some time too, so.
I'm also very grateful to them.
That's the nineteenth. Greensburg.
Uh, we'll be here until August, second week of August. We are getting parts cannibalized from a couple of machines to get ours. We can at least get the downtown lines done. So, maybe, if everything goes right, we can at least get the down, like, Main Street and Washington Street painted minus the curbs and the outside lines. So it'll still be a fresh look and just, we won't have the whole thing done for sour crowd days.
Well, you're a lot cheaper this council meeting, I really appreciate that. Poor Travis.
Anything else that Travis put in possibly?
At least he's smiling this council meeting. Yeah, laughing.
Anybody got a thing for?
No. Thank you, Travis.
Pardon me, Director.
Uh, I started registrations for fall light football and soccer today. Uh, deadline is August sixth, and no registrations will be taken after August ninth. Other than that, just been mulling, painting poles down at the park. Weeding.
How are the poles coming?
They're coming.
How many poles you got done?
I got one side done.
How many poles over?
There's like two hundred. I got like eighty done.
You're painting them by hand?
What, spray them?
Anybody got anything for Gary?
Keep going. You're doing a good job.
Police report, police department report.
Nothing really new, just want to continue to remind the public the speed limit change on business thirty, uh, forty-five and thirty-five mile an hour zones in certain areas. We continue to see several vehicles that are exceeding those limits. Uh, we've been very generous and very kind, um, to this point, and we will continue to do that. The signage, um, is, we got a couple more that we're going to add in Mount, or in Lisbon, we talked about. We are throwing up the digital signs that we had previously when it was thirty that we had to shut off. Um, we're going to throw those back up on business thirty in Mount Vernon by the quarry coming down the hill on both sides of that and by the cemetery. So I think that'll help a lot as well. So just reminding everybody again, um, our initial thirty-day window for warnings is expired. And, um, so enforcement will probably begin sometime, but we will continue to, you know, be generous, wait for these, try these other options first.
Out of towners, get them. If they're out of county, get them. Eric, we're still not used to it. Those out of towners, they should go back. I know, I was going to just listen off.
It was only fifty-five to begin with.
These are explaining the margins.
I'm just being, I have to know business, I don't want you to.
Anybody got any questions for?
No.
How's, um, the UTP golf course going?
Excellent. Um, I would say, you know, we, right before Heritage Days, we had a massive influx the night before fireworks. Everybody wanted to get theirs inspected on Thursday, on Friday of fireworks, um, from that. But it, it's really been flowing very well. We've been getting a lot of positive feedback from that. Um, I think we've only had one issue that we had to deal with, but that was, that would have been an issue regardless, um, from that standpoint. So we are continuing, I think we're on. permit, like twenty-five, twenty-seven, something like that?
Good.
So, yeah, there's definitely interest, and a lot of positive feedback, everybody's happy, we're both sharing back and forth, allowing them to, to go to both cities.
Fire chief report.
Uh, the only thing fire-related is, uh, just an update was, most of you know, we submitted the AFG grant this year again, uh, it was for twenty-two sets of new bunkers here, uh, that are twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars per set. Um, and by some of the correspondence I've been receiving via email from FEMA, I'm very encouraged that we are gonna have a good shot at getting that grant, so, um, that would be a huge, huge thing to get, so, um, patiently waiting to hear back from that, but, um, other than that, uh, main thing was the hydrant question that we wanted to, to make sure the public was aware of, and we'll make sure that we communicate that on our Facebook site, and we'll get the city hall staff to do the same.
And here we watch the streets downtown before sauerkraut.
Yes, yep, and we'll do it again after.
City administrative report.
Um, I met with a couple of local contractors, um, they're gonna be giving the quote for the barns to stabilize and, um, stabilize the roofs and the actual structures there. I'm meeting with YTT, Drayton and IR this week to get a plan for first phase, the next steps, what we're doing, make sure that they get the information to the engineer for the well, I know that they've driven their feet a little bit on that, and then also, they're gonna give us a budget for phase two, just so we have a shot in the dark, dollar amount. I know Drayton and I have talked about fundraising, uh, for that portion, so, um, this way it gives them a little idea of what, where we, where we're sitting and what we need, so, um, I should have a little bit more, uh, at the next meeting on that. Um, next week, Christina and I are going to the Municipal Professionals Institute in Ames, uh, this is for a couple of budget classes, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, uh, there's some really good things on end-of-the-year reports, fiscal year reports, uh, budget payment type stuff, so we're gonna be heading there for that.
Are you driving up and back or staying?
I am going to stay at least one night.
So you're going separately?
Yeah.
Are you staying?
Yeah, I'm staying today.
Hmm, um, I think that's it. Any questions for Brandon? Christina report.
Training next week, otherwise I will be working with Connie tomorrow on end of the fiscal year, start of the fiscal year training, so, lots of training going on around here, but coming here.
Council reports, Sarah?
Um, I don't have, like, much, um, did Brian Courtney retire after forty years? He posted on his Facebook.
Yeah, um...
So I was just gonna give him a shout-out, saying thank you for his service.
Yeah, so it'll get officially accepted at the next fire meeting, and then, um, I'm gonna do something for him, so if that, if he doesn't have a change of mind.
Right, well, I just saw his Facebook post, so I wanted to give him a shout-out, that thank him for his service, um, that's really all I have.
Travis?
Uh, just thanks to everybody that worked on the ball cleanup, and, uh, thanks to Brian Courtney for his service, that's all I have.
Sarah, or Stephanie?
Ditto, that's all I have.
Um, ditto, but one more thing, um, I, I, I'm a little concerned about our discussion that we're gonna have next week about the sauerkraut days, uh, park alcohol policy decisions that we might be making, um, just wanna throw out there, do we need to have the, our attorney involved at all, or making sure we make a legal decision?
I don't really know, to be honest with you, if we need him, and the only reason I say that is because there have been liquor licenses out there before.
Okay.
Um, the fire department had a dance out there, it had a liquor license out there, there was somebody else too, was it you?
It just feels like new territory.
At the park, did you ever run your liquor license down there? Did, um...
I think Scott might be more of insurance then.
Okay.
I don't know what angle you're...
I have Brandon to talk to Scott.
I, I can, I mean, it's work, I can make, have a conversation with Mark, or if you want him here, we could...
Just, just make sure that if, you know, if, it's always felt wrong to tell our police force to look the other way.
I agree.
On a city park, with the rule and regulation, and now we have a new force, and this feels especially wrong now, and I wanna make sure that we do the right thing. Hey, I'd love the idea of, of, of moving a gram shop over there, but then I guess we'd be shutting off the cooler bringing in, so that we protect the sale of the...
I agree.
As, as somebody who's done it the last, what, eight years now, um, I think binge drinking and everything that does happen over there would be stopped if you guys did that, if you forced that, um. Last tournament that Mount Vernon had, they allowed it over there, and...
We've allowed it when the Heritage Days Committee applied for a beer permit, they had to apply for two separate permits, one for uptown and one for the ball field, and then they took control and sold, sold the alcohol there. So that's, you know, that's what I would caution, I think, exactly, I suspect what you're going to hear from the attorney is, if nobody's going to apply for a beer permit to serve alcohol there and take responsibility for that, they will probably advise you to not allow alcohol in the park, and, um, I think that's gonna be, you know, I don't see any attorney recommending anything other than that.
Well, not only that, but you got, I mean, we've gotta put heavy ordinances that we don't enforce, because we sit up here all the time and we complain about somebody's yard not being loaded, and we, we sign, we, we cite them for and stuff like that, but we're fully willing to look the other way for three or four days while everybody gets drunk.
Well, we're also, we're also downed on Main Street right here too, and we're overlooking ordinance on Main.
But that'll be under alcohol later.
Yeah, that's under alcohol license, drink, chat.
As long as we're prepared to issue a permit next, next week or certain, sorry, in two weeks.
We, we asked the, we simply, and again, don't think of me as a council member, I'm a business owner talking to you guys now, we addressed the sauerkraut committee just to get their blessing, just to make sure they were okay with us having it there, because we felt that we wanted to cover all of our ducks before we, you know, if they said absolutely not, which, that's what I was told by another council member, was that they nixed it, then I didn't get a response from the sauerkraut committee, so we kind of just were like, okay, so, but now I'm hearing something different...
You never talked to the sauerkraut day committee, really?
I did, we emailed, Jerry and I emailed back and forth.
Oh, okay.
But he said, the last I heard from him was, they were going to discuss it and get back to me. I then heard it from John that they nixed it. I was talking to Brandon in the office, and... So I, I never heard back from Jerry that it was absolutely off the, off the fence.
I, I just bring it up only because I wanna make sure that we do the right legal thing.
Oh, absolutely.
I support, you know, the softball tournament and having a few beers while you play, I support that, I just wanna make sure we're legal.
We're, you're gonna get, I mean, we're gonna be in trouble no matter what we do, because if we say that we're gonna let somebody take their license out there, everybody's gonna be up in arms, cause they gotta pay for alcohol, and not bringing their own coolers and all, something like that. But then, on the other side of that, if we say we're not going to, but we're just gonna look the other way and let people drink out there, we're gonna have people who say we don't even enforce our own ordinance, so, I mean, it happens that way every time.
And I, I disagree, I, I don't see...
Where have you been for the last ten years? Because that's all they do is complain about it.
I don't see it as telling the police to look the other way. They can't go and check everybody's koozie without a, a reading.
They don't have to, they can see the all coolers sitting out in the park.
They can have five of those coolers.
John, there are literally piles of beer cans this big laying in the grass every year.
That's, that's another issue, I haven't been over there when they're doing...
Oh, gosh, it's nonstop.
What's our police chief, thank you, Bob.
I think there needs to be clear direction, I agree with you, I, I appreciate council's consideration of this, um, I think looking the other way is a difficult position to be in from that perspective, because it takes one citizen to blink to put a police officer over there, and now we have to discern, council kinda wants this, but they don't really want us to do anything about it, but this citizen's complaining about it now and that kinda, it can get very sticky from that situation. So I, again, I would, I would defer back that we, one way or the other, either council approves it to be there, um...
Now let me ask you a question, if council, if council says we're going to allow a business to transfer their license out there and serve beer, and you guys get a call over there, what does that look like?
Much like you would if, if you had to issue at a bar.
At a bar.
I mean, you're going to go out there, you're gonna work with a liquor license holder if there's an intoxicated, I mean, the thing that the liquor license does is bring control to an uncontrolled situation before. What, everything you're hearing and all these piles of beer cans that are there, the intoxicated people that are there later in the evening for the night games and stuff like that, when we would most likely get called, um, is going to be controlled by a liquor license vendor who's, you know, they are in jeopardy if they're responsible not to serve an intoxicated person, they're responsible to make sure they're twenty-one, they're responsible if that person leaves and jumps in a vehicle and kills somebody, um, it's all covered under that.
And if there's nobody covering it, and council decides no beer at the park, and there is beer at the park, then what?
If council decides no, I mean, if, if there's beer at the park, they're, again, breaking the law, so then we would take, we could take enforcement action on that, um, I think your liability is much less because you have not changed your ordinance, you haven't, you haven't allowed it to be there.
And you already spoke to what would happen if we said just look the other way and get a call.
Right, I think you're, yeah, you're opening up a can of wort for liability.
And I'm just curious, as the chief of police, do you have a preference?
I prefer if there's going to be alcohol there, that it be handled by a licensed person who's responsible for that.
It, it's my memory, I've always been told that when the park ground was purchased or given to the city, that the proviso was there'd be no alcohol sold there forever, and that possibly the property could revert back to the seller, we violated that, that was just for sales.
Well, it's also...
I've never seen the agreement, it goes back a lot of years.
It goes back a lot of years, and it was also stated in that agreement that it stays with the city and that, um, I mean, technically for that agreement, the school can't even run the concession stand, because they're not allowed to make any money off of the property.
And they're selling advertisement there.
Yeah, so we're violating that agreement all over the place, but...
Well, we don't need to, it's all...
I just, yeah, I'm sorry.
Ex- I'm putting another can of wort down.